Thank you, Bill. So I will call the meeting to order at 6:31 and we can have the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands one nation under God,
indivisible, free, and just as for all.
Thank you. Now, before I forget to ask, does anybody have any old or new business they would like added to the agenda that I can add now for when we get there? Any topics anybody would like to add?
I hope not.
Nope. Alrighty, then we will go right to public comments. Has there been anything, Lucy, that of importance that we need to know about?
Uh, no public comments.
Alrighty, then we can have a review of the previous month's meeting minutes of November 8th. I did note one little typo, I think. Under the date, it says via video conference, which I think probably just was, you know, pulled over from the previous minute, but it was actually at the health department. So that's one correction, and then I'll let everybody make a review of the minutes and see if there's anything they would like to correct or add. Okay, and if they're all fine, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes with that one correction of the location.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Thanks, Deb, and a second?
I'll second it.
Allison, thank you, and all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alrighty, thank you. A review of November Health Department Activity Report. If you were busy in November.
So, uh, the usual meetings that I always attend are on there. There was a recall on, um, some applesauce. Um, the FDA, we had a meeting with them, an emergency meeting with FDA, with, um, the State Department of Health. It was a brand called Juana Banner, and, um, it was sold in dollar stores throughout the state of Connecticut. Um, we didn't have, we don't have any dollar stores, so in terms of what we had to do, uh, it was just educational outreach. So daycares, we sent out some information, uh, put it on our webpage.
Dollar store, there's one down, um, yeah, so.
Yeah, so every health department throughout the state, you know, contacted their dollar stores, made sure that there wasn't any of that on the shelves. It was linked to the cinnamon. In the, in the applesauce, it was contain a high level of lead. So that was the reason for the recall. Um, the, there were sixty-four cases, uh, illnesses reported, one in Connecticut. So, um,
Wow.
That, uh, so we, we're still getting information on that, but again.
Do they know how the lead got into the cinnamon?
They're doing some investigation at the, the plant where it's produced, but they think it's at a plant in Ecuador. So that was, um, something of interest in November. Um, we're continuing to get our tobacco and cosmetology license renewals in and paid. Um, our new sanitaryian, Nicolette, she began on November fourteenth. She's doing really well, she's fits in great, um, she has a lot of experience. She came from Nogatuck Valley where Rich, our, our other sanitaryian was previously. Um, so she is experienced in septic, in restaurants, and at just everything across the board, so.
Terrific. Thank goodness.
That's, that's good news, right?
It was a long time coming.
Yeah, and those two work together, so it's just been a really easy flow and, you know, easy, uh, orientation and all that kind of thing. So they seem, they both seem pretty happy. So that's good news.
Well, we want to keep them happy, right?
Yeah, that's true.
Terrific.
So one of the other things that they have been working on is to make some changes to the fee schedule that we currently have.
I saw that.
Yep, they just either increase some fees or merge things together or even decrease some fees. Not much, um, change, but it just made more sense, especially since they're the ones that are, you know, reviewing permits and going out and doing inspections, so, um, it needed a, a good haul over. And so that was one of the things I just wanted to bring to your attention, so if you notice that.
Yeah, I, when I compared, there were a couple of things that went down. Most things stayed the same, and if something went up, it was really kind of rounding. You know, it wasn't huge, and it seemed very logical, so.
Yeah, and, and then they condensed it too, because there was a ton of septic this and permit and pre, you know, review and blah, blah, blah. So they just made it a little bit more streamlined, you know?
Now, do, do we need to vote on this for you or no?
Yeah, we don't need to vote on it, it's already, it was effective December first. Um, it's been posted to the website, they've updated all the forms to reflect the changes in that.
And everything seemed very reasonable, truthfully.
Yeah, yeah, and you know, I think the last time we actually increased anything was when I first started. And we did the, all the, the fee changes with the FDA code. You know, but this was just, again, it was just to make it a little bit easier so that there's not so much, you know, nonsense all over.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I agree, that seems very logical to me.
Um, So November was the first, uh, Connecticut deaths of flu and RSV. Patients were eighty to eighty-nine years old, so, um, in terms of cases of flu, um, we have only had reported into our database that we get from the state. We've only had five in November, so we're still on, you know, on the low end. Um, but, you know, it's flu season, so we're still promoting the vaccine, trying to get, um, get more people vaccinated. We still have probably about two hundred or so doses left that we haven't used.
And you gave quite a few, I'm trying to find the number here. I mean, you've given over a thousand this year of all vaccines.
Right, so I think, so as of November.
Seven hundred and fifty-two.
Yep, so we have, we can return, I believe it's fifteen percent. Um, it, while we have until June to do that, and then, uh, so if we, if we don't give it all, we don't give it all, this will be the first, the first time ever. But like I mentioned in the previous meeting, everybody's in the same boat throughout the state, all, all the health departments are. There's just not, um, nobody's interested in it. Um, we, like, like we said, it could be because of the COVID vaccine, that we're not offering it. Um, people just are, are kind of vaccine, um, they, they've had it, so, um, I think.
Excuse me for, for interrupting, but while we're on the, the subject of the COVID vaccine, every time I've talked to the CBS, they ha, it hasn't been available, they've run out, they've run out. Are, are you, is there somewhere else that does seem to have it?
There's a list that, um, they put, we put together at the Health Department of places that offer it, and that's on the town webpage too.
Okay.
And on the Health Department page.
Okay.
So you can try any of those.
Okay.
Those listed there. Um, but I think there's, yeah, there's a whole variety of reasons why they're, I don't know if they're running out, if they're just, there's nobody available to vaccinate. There's issues with the insurance still, so, um, it's, ever since they started charging for it, it ended up kind of becoming a nightmare, so.
Okay, yeah.
Not looking to get any at this.
Yeah, yeah, no, and I understand, ironically, in speaking to a colleague, uh, from when I was at Yale, and I said to her, you know, because she said, well, her primary care provider had recommended getting the flu, the RSV, and the COVID each, getting all three, but getting them two weeks apart. And, um, when I said the, I, the COVID seemed to not be available at my pharmacy, she goes, she said, oh, well, I got mine through my health department, and I'm like, oh, but we're not doing that, we're going with the pharmacies. So I, I just wondered if maybe the pharmacies, to your knowledge, have been doing better than they were in October and November.
Um, I mean, I don't know, uh, they think they're doing a little bit better because it's, yeah, it's a little bit more available, there were some hiccups in the beginning getting.
Okay, so maybe.
Um, yeah. Um, you know, but I don't know.
Yeah, I have not heard any complaints from patients not being able to get it on a reasonable.
Oh, oh, good.
Maybe it's calling around to type of couple of places, waiting for it to come in, but I think most places are getting them, and people that want it, I think are getting it.
Oh, okay, terrific, it could be just, I mean, it could be just the one pharmacy I've been talking to, because they're always kind of, you know.
CBS is having a real problem with a lot of different meds.
I think so, maybe just go somewhere else, and you had, you said you got it. And were you charged an arm and a leg, Glenn? Did you end up, uh, no?
Um, I, insurance paid for everything for mine, so a lot of times I pay for it, I got the flu and the COVID nineteen on the same time.
Terrific, okay, so we know you, it's possible, excellent, all right, so that's good, sorry I interrupted.
That's okay.
I was, uh, you were talking about, um, the flu vaccines and how many you've given, and then I interrupted you.
So that's, that's, so like I said, we're still working on that, just trying to get as much of the vaccine um, used as possible, but, um, you know, we're going to reevaluate our order for next year and see what we want to do, definitely not going to order more.
Because every year we actually have done ten or fifteen percent more than the year before and used every bit of it, so.
We use every bit of it, and in some years we've had to reach out to other health departments to get more.
Correct.
Um, now, yeah, everybody's sending out emails saying, oh, do you want to get rid of it, do you want to get rid of it, everybody's in the same boat, so.
So the question might be by next year, will people still continue to have vaccine? What's that, fatigue? Or will they come back to realizing, uh, how valuable the flu vaccine is? Um, and how you're going to have to pull out your crystal ball and figure that one out?
Well, we, we ordered the, uh, vaccine early, but we can always cancel it or we could always, you know, lessen the amount of, uh, vaccine at whatever point. But once you miss the window, that's it, you can't order more.
Yeah, no.
The other thing I think is we have to look at where we're at in a few months from now to see how effective the COVID vaccine actually is, because, you know, people say, well, I still got it six times or four times, and then they just say, oh, forget it, I'm not getting it, you know?
Yeah.
So that's another thing.
Yeah. And COVID is definitely back. I mean, I, I feel as though it's definitely back. Um, yeah, it's, it's not gone. I mean, to, to, the question to my two physicians here, will it ever be gone? I mean, is it, it's just going to be a part of our lives forever, correct? Like the flu or a cold or?
Yeah, likely will stay around for a very long time. I think one of the keys for the vaccine is not so much, um, not getting the, um, disease, is not dying from a disease, not being hospitalized from disease. So I think people who have had the vaccines have less virulent, um, less viral costs, less likely to be hospitalized, less likely to die from that. So even if you get it, you may not get as sick, so I think people are thinking that there, you may not prevent all disease, but you may not get as sick.
Yeah, I mean, even just anecdotally from family and friends, I'm constantly hearing, well, gee, you know, I was positive, but I didn't even feel a thing. Which certainly wasn't the case three years ago, right?
I agree with you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, thank you, doctors. Um, okey dokey, Lucy, I keep interrupting you.
Yes, sorry. Um, Sam and Sue just completed another Matter of Balance class. Um, that ended, uh, December seventh. Um, so they plan on doing it again, just not sure exactly when. Um, because of the last class, they didn't have that many participants as they did originally. Um, so that was successful though. Um, we are going to be participating in a winter Christmas event at the Senior Center on December nineteenth. The nurse, so Sam and Sue, uh, are going to be developing some kind of activities for the seniors and doing some outreach. Um, myself and Jen will be participating in the Hillcrest Middle School Fair on the same day, December nineteenth.
Oh, how nice.
Yeah, we did that, I think it was last year or the year before, um, and, you know, we, we, so they sure are going to do some kind of a hand washing, um, program, educational program for the kids there.
Can they see dirty hands or something? That's always fun, they love that.
Yeah, we have the, a germ where, uh, light where you can see, you know.
Yeah, oh, terrific.
Uh, and we have a ton of things to give away to the kids.
Terrific.
To get them involved, so. Um, so we're going to be doing that.
Terrific.
I already spoke about the fluke cases that we have, um, have been monitoring in our, um, in town, we've only had five in the past month. Um, we have given in November a total of a hundred and thirty-one flu vaccines.
But, but there had been quite a few the two months prior, so when, when I looked.
Yeah, it's a total so far of seven hundred and fifty-two.
Yeah, oh, fifty-two, okay, because it's, and, and over, over a thousand, like eleven hundred vaccines, you know, that you've given year to date, July, August, I mean, and that's only one, two, three, four, five months. That's, that's a lot of productivity.
Yeah, I mean, and you know, we, we've, and on the, one of the pages in this report, you'll see all of the, the clinics, the flu clinics that we offer, so, uh, it's not a lack of offering the clinic.
No.
Everybody wants to get it.
But, but you know, I think the good news is too, I mean, you're doing other vaccines as well. I mean, you know, you've got, um, the flu vaccine, but you're doing DTAP, and you're doing, you know, TDEP, and you're doing other things for, like, do you do the cocoon?
The cocoon is on there, yes.
Yep, yep, and I'm maybe, yeah, 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 there it is, I mean, I think that, you know, you're offering to all ages. Um, and, uh, you know, you're offering across the board, uh, you know, a lot of, 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 uh, helping people with their health maintenance, so it's, uh, you know, I don't, you know, eleven hundred vaccines in that short period of time is nothing to laugh at. Yeah, it's, it's a lot. And I think the majority of that, as unlike past years where you used a significant number, I mean, I think we had some years over seventy-five, eighty percent of vaccines were given by volunteers. This is now given by staff, which is the way it really should be, you have more control, so.
Or at least if we have, um, volunteers, you know, like Allison, um, we were able to pay through that grant funding that we have, so.
Which is the way it should be, yeah, yeah, and I know I always beat this, of course, but you have, like, Allison, any volunteers, you have their, um, RN on record, you have a copy of their.
Right.
They're like.
But yeah, you'll see, so in the month of November, we held eight, uh, eight walk-in flu clinics. It seemed like the Friday afternoons were the busiest. So, um, another thing that we started doing towards the, uh, the, the last, you know, few clinics was asking people on the, when they filled out their forms in the office to get vaccinated was, um, you know, where they heard about the clinic. Was it on the webpage, Facebook, was it that sign, just so we could get a better i- idea of how to advertise?
Yeah.
Um, and how to use some of our, our funding that's, um, uh, supposed to be used towards media campaigns and immunization funding, so.
What was the result?
So it seemed like most of it was that sign, that electronic sign.
That sign, yeah.
Deb loves the sign.
I love that sign.
And, um, our Facebook page.
Okay.
Not yet.
Okay.
So yeah, that sign, I don't know, they like that sign.
Good job, well, people see it, it's right in front of your face, you know, you don't have to go anywhere, you don't need to copy. Yep, good for you, good for you.
Um, ticks, we had seventeen ticks in November, believe it or not.
I saw that.
Six positive for Lyme, so we're still getting them, uh, you know?
I saw that. And FTD, that one I see, and I think to myself, really? Uh, you know, I guess that's still happening.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, well, you know, as long as, uh, you can, you know. Um, we had our annual, um, uh, vaccine for children visit, our, um, our site visit, where someone from the state comes and they just evaluate a program, make sure we have, you know, everything we need to have and not went wrong.
And that's, and that's not easy to pass.
Well, Sam is very organized, so she's always impressed.
Those of you who don't, those of you who are unfamiliar, that, uh, the state is very perspicacious. They look at your logs that you're checking, you're a specific type of log in a specific type of refrigerator twice a day. How do you handle electricity going off? How do you handle the weekends? How do you log in every single vaccine and who did it go to? It is not a simple task. Um, so that, uh, congratulations on passing that, because I've been through it a few times in my day, and it is, it's not a simple thing, so.
Well, I'll, I'll give all the credit to Sam for that one, because she's the one that, you know, oversees that. She, you know, she's always updating the policies and she makes sure that we have everything that we need, so.
Congratulations, because that's, that's not a simple task, so I understand. Yeah.
Um, trying to think anything I missed. I think everything else is this month, so I won't talk about anything else this month.
I, I did see under the sanitaryian, there were some six complaints. What kind of complaints does the sanitaryian follow up on?
So anything from, you know, somebody ate at a restaurant and it was dirty, um, there's garbage on the neighbor's property.
Oh.
I mean, it, it's, it's, it could be a variety of things, a septic system failure, someone jarred. Um, yeah, you name it, a hoarding complaint, um, yeah.
I also noticed, um, well, permit, a permit to dig a well, and I thought everybody in Trumbull was on, um, city water, am I wrong?
No, there's still wells and there's still septic.
Well, I knew there was still septic, because I, 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 I knew that, because of when the houses are so far apart that they aren't on the sewer, but for some reason I thought we were all on city water, but I guess I'm wrong.
There's not many and we don't get many.
Okay.
So, but yeah, there are a few.
Okay, alrighty. Um, so now that I've interrupted you nine hundred and sixty-two times, do you have anything else that you would like to talk about for your activity report?
Um, just, I think, you know, all of the grants that we keep talking about, those are finally approved, going through, so. Um, everything is, yeah, everything else is going well, I don't, um, I don't know, uh, our basement, we've been working on getting that more organized, we're getting there. Um, any improvements in the Health Department, I'm trying to think what else, they put lighting in on the side of the walkway. Um, yeah, I don't know if they did that last time, but yeah, so. But that's about it, you know, I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Any questions that anybody has, they'd like to ask, Lucy? I think I interrupted her and asked her a million, so maybe I covered any questions you all had. Um, under old business, I did jot down the schedule for twenty twenty-four that was sent out to us after our last meeting, we talked about that all the meetings will now be at six thirty and they will go alternating Zoom and Public Health Department and Location Health Department. I have the March meeting I know was moved, um, I have a conflict, but I'm working on changing it, so I'm going to try to make that work, because I know you're on vacation and we need you to have the meeting. So I'm working on changing that for the March. Um, did anybody else have any conflicts or is everybody good for the twenty twenty-four? Okay, terrific.
And then if anything happens with weather, at least we can, we could always change it back to Zoom.
Yeah.
Good idea, good idea.
I know, it looks like so far, knock on wood, we're going to have another mild winter, I don't know.
Yeah, 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 good idea. Um, I had here under new business, the fee schedules, which we already talked about. Um, oh, I had one other question, uh, do we have any open hours or any positions? Um, any, anything that you're still recruiting or? I know you've decided to kind of lay low on the sanitaryian.
That, yeah, we're done with that, um, you know, we don't have the part timers anymore. Um, we're still considering maybe taking an intern, but at this time I'm holding off just because I want the new sanitaryian just to kind of get settled in and, you know, I don't want to bombard them with, you know, bringing someone out in the field and, um, plus, you know, our office is really tight. Uh, we don't, so with everything going on during the holidays and flu and this and that, I'd rather just wait.
Yeah, and, and both of the current sanitarians are able to certify a new graduate, if I said it right. So I think there were some hours that maybe looking forward at a point where you think it's appropriate, if you did take on an intern or someone who's a graduate, they could be helping to get them certified, then you might be able to hire them.
Well, we're not hiring any more sanitarians.
All the, somehow I thought there were still some hours open, am I wrong?
It's just two, two full-time positions, that's, that's all we need.
Thank you for correcting me, okay. Well, then, truthfully, anything you would be doing at this point would be sort of, um, you're, you're just trying to help the pro bono, helping the situation, but not, uh, getting anyone from our department, okay.
Right.
Thank you, I just had that question, if there were any other hours, and there, and there's nothing else grant-wise, any other hours that are? Any other positions?
No, no new staff in the grants, um, so it's just to pay, um, current staff um, for, you know, overtime or anything related to trainings and, um, conferences. Um, we've purchased a ton of equipment, ton of things that we needed for the office.
Terrific.
Wow, and then the immunization grant that pays for all of the, the staff for the clinics going forward, that ends in, oh boy, what is it, two thousand twenty-six, I think, that grant ends? So we still have, and the other one is two thousand twenty-seven, the workforce, so.
Well, you've done a great job in terms of, I mean, I know I say this every meeting, and, and this department started out on, I mean, a shoestring doesn't even describe it. And, and your predecessor, you know, kind of got things started, but then you came in and we had COVID and we had, you know, one thing after another, that you've really had to pull things together on a, on a shoestring. And then you looked for grants, you've looked for, um, quality staff, and you've really done a terrific job doing that, so, I mean, you know, the, the, uh, citizens of Trumbull, you know, owe you a, a debt of gratitude for all you've done and all your staff have done, including Taylor, and and all of you have just done a tremendous job to, um, provide all the services you're providing, and, uh, you know, I think we, I speak for everybody on the board when I say that, uh, thank you, you know, thank you, thank you, thank you, you've done a terrific job and everybody deserves, you know, getting their, uh, overtime and getting paid properly and, and, um, and their, um, kudos, so. You know, thank you for all you do, we, we appreciate it, and, you know, do we say it often enough, I'm not sure, but, but thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
I, I agree, I think the department's the best it's ever been.
I agree, Joe, I mean, Joe, you, and you are the man who's been there long enough to be able to make that statement.
Yeah, twenty-one years, I go on, back that far.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, and thank you to you, and thank you to, you know, everybody on the board for all you do um to be here and to, you know, be backup for Lucy and whatnot, but I just have to say that, you know, every month, I'm amazed, I read the reports and I see what you've accomplished, and I see what all of the staff accomplished, and you you, you've done it, um, you know, put one foot in front of the other, despite all the crazy circumstances that we've had the last couple of years. Um, you know, and I, and the board, you're all here, you know, despite working and families and everything that you have, here you all are, and it's, it's really appreciated, I think that, you know, I pat on the back goes out to everybody, but thank you Lucy and, and Taylor, you're really tremendous staff, and we're very lucky to have you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Make sure that the television station knows that, they can all hear me say it. So, um, alrighty, old business, new business, I don't have anything else, does anybody have any other questions? Comments, thoughts that they'd like to bring forward?
No.
Okay, okay, well, I'm certainly wishing everybody a wonderful, happy and healthy, healthy, healthy um, holiday season and new year, and I will accept a motion to adjourn if we're done.
A motion?
Thank you Karen, and a second.
A second.
Thank you Glenn, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so we can adjourn, and thank you Bill for being here, and thank you Taylor and Stella. Our little Stella being here, and uh, thank you to everyone, you know, this I think, oh, look at that. Oh my God, you know, I think this is such a great team, we, we really wish everybody a wonderful holiday season. And uh, we will be talking to each other in the new year, oh my goodness, and look at this big guy.
He looks like you too.
Just like you, yeah, they both. Well, happy holidays to everyone.
Happy holidays and merry.
And love, love to all.
Thank you, same here too, everybody.